Five o'clock, everybody, all meeting to order. You have all board members present, plus the student representative Kennedy and a new superintendent. You're the only introduced.
I'm Anna Gutwold, I'm Alyssa's cousin.
Convenient. So she warned you about funding there?
Yeah.
Good, good.
Thank you.
Good, welcome. We'll move on to the A communication.
All right, so we'll just kick it right off and invite Cassie Agerson, our elementary principal, up to the table and give us our first communication update. Come on up.
Official oxy.
Yep, that's right.
It always looks first.
Yeah, even sit down and get comfy and I'll even pull up your little, your little dookie here.
Yes, so first, thank you for allowing me this opportunity to connect. I think this is such a critical opportunity for you to be educated on what's happening in all of our unique areas. So I just am providing an update at what's happening at Painsville Elementary School. My first update is not bulleted, but my cup is full, serving as your Painsville Elementary Principal. I walked in, you know, July 12th-ish, not sure how that first day of school was going to go, right? When people ask me how that first day of school went, I respond magical. It was so neat to see all the processes and procedures that were in place prior to me being a part of that first day. And so hats off to the teachers and the staff for establishing those so that we could have a successful first day. Getting back to my bulletin list, hopefully you had an opportunity to see that, but we hosted a welcome back meet and greet conference time for families, which allocated 15 minutes that parents could sign up with their child to come and meet their teacher one-on-one in a more quiet setting than the traditional open house that I think really was a positive that came out of COVID. My understanding is that this was a change. So that was great. We had 99% of our students and families attend. And I want to point out that we had 100% of our students and families attend before the first day of school. So that 1% we were able to connect with prior to our Wednesday starting. So I think that, you know, speaks volumes of the desire to get into the schools, to meet with families, meet with teachers. So that was great. Our welcome back meet and greet, we had different support that was offered, that families could connect with transportation, they could connect with referendum information. So thank you to Bruce and Cheryl for being at the meet and greet. I think that was a great opportunity for families to connect with you and receive some information as well. Enrollment, I think Janelle is going to talk a little bit more in depth about this later on, but we have seen an increase since day one when I started, which is typical for this time of school year, you know, certainly having enrollments the day before, the day of, but welcoming, you know, new families into our district and into our schools. We continue to monitor class sizes, certainly with the influx of students. We're looking at where our class size is at and what our student needs and how can we support our students coming in. I just want to extend a warm welcome to the new families, to Painsville area schools, and certainly to our kindergarten class of 2035. Wrap your head around that one. That's pretty exciting. But, you know, certainly the message, thank you for choosing Painsville Schools. Our back to school, as you know, and my colleagues know, the first couple of weeks and first few days are, they're hopping. We're moving and grooving as soon as that first bell rings. And so really those first few days, we are establishing our relationships with our students, establishing procedures and processes throughout the school day and really taking that time to model our expectations. And you can see in the pictures that I provided, we had bus safety today. You know, just reiterating, what does that look like for students kindergarten through grade five? Looking at back to school, it really is a team effort, making sure that we have everything from food service to custodial to classrooms. Everything is ready for the return of our students. And so I want to just say thank you to our staff, making that all happen and making it be magical, like I mentioned. Beginning of the school year is critical for learning about where our students are at, coming to us academically, behaviorally, socially, emotionally. And so I mentioned that we do fall benchmarking, and that is a time for us to look at math and reading specifically to get started. And then how do we allocate our time, people, and resources to meeting the needs of our students? And so right now, our MTSS teachers are doing a great job, doing some fall benchmarking to learn about where our students are at. And so then we'll develop programming based on student need after that. Coming up, we've got picture day. We have our school-wide assembly this Friday. We have our Cherrydale fundraiser and certainly homecoming that we are excited to be a part of and to celebrate with the secondary school as well. I wanted to show you those first two pictures. That was the first day of school. I woke up in a little bit of a panic because there was fog. And I'm thinking, oh boy, what is this first day going to look like? But thankfully it lifted and we were able to proceed as usual. And if you weren't there the first day of school, whether it be this building or the elementary, it was just filled with excitement and smiles and kids were excited to be back, staff were excited to be back. So that's my update pretty well tonight.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Great. David, come on up.
All right, good evening. My glasses on. So I just wanted to give you a kind of an update on some things that we got going on, some dates and things, and then talk a little bit about some of our goals and initiatives for the school year. First of all, we are, we think we have the NHS advisor position filled, and so we're still looking for a prom advisor. We've had it out to staff for quite some time now. We'll probably open it up if there's any community members that are, that are interested in it. So if you know of anyone or you're interested, just let me know. We have, the FFA plot is, is Thursday from 10 to 2. Out on, out by their plot, the FFA alumni put on a great program and the meal and then in some of the stations that they have there, so hopefully you can make it out for that. We have, homecoming week is October 3rd through the 8th, and we're working on planning some activities with our student councils on that. I just want to thank custodial staff and our kitchen staff for everything that, that they did for us this summer. As you know, the building was full with, we had our meal program, summer meal program here. We had pause here and I'm sure Matt will talk a little bit about that. But we served about 8,000 meals again this summer. And I just want Katie and Lori and Lynn just do a really good job with that. Custodial staff had to kind of do things in a different manner and just appreciate all that. And by the time we got to open house, we, the building looked great. And you wouldn't have known, we had hundreds of elementary kids here all summer. So on the first day of school, I met with all the grade levels. And, you know, this is really, it's been a few years since we've had a somewhat normal start to a school year. We've always had in the last few years, we've had some things going on. And what we wanted to focus on this year is getting back to shoring up our attendance, shoring up our, how we handle social media and cyberbullying and things like that. So we, we have, so we went through that with all of the students and then made some changes in our handbook, which you had seen. And so we're just trying to kind of rein things back in and move forward with that. It's been a few years. And part of that with the cyberbullying and school connections is the PBIS. And so seven of us went to do it in August and, and started the, the training for, to implement PBIS in the, starting in the middle school and moving our way up. I was part of the implementation at the elementary school. And so there are some parallels to it, but it is a little bit, little bit different. We met today and we are working on what our, you know, slogan or, and how that comes into our expectations. And it is a slow process. It is, it is about a two-year implementation to, to be fully ready to go with that. But we are, we have some things that we have to get done before another training in November. So we're continuing to work on that. We have.
David, would you tell us for the community, what PBIS does work at?
It's, it's Positive Behavior Intervention Systems. And it's, it's really recognizing when kids are meeting our expectations and focusing on teaching those expectations. Or we want to get staff to start thinking about our, our behavioral expectations the same way we think of academic expectations because we have students that come to school that really just may not understand how those social things go and what expectations are. And instead of moving right to, you know, discipline or, you know, in a negative manner, we want to try to teach those expectations and then build on that so that students are, are working together and that they're, they're understanding it and we can start to recognize those students for what they're doing right.
I have a question. Are the faculty and staff noticing the kids who've had this training versus not? And like, are you seeing less incidents? Like, is there data that you see things are going better? Some of it, you might not track.
Yeah, we don't really, we haven't really tracked it. But when a student comes from the elementary to the middle school, the, the issues are different. And so, you know, what those expectations might have been in elementary may, may be a little more focused. And here we have to kind of adjust. And so that's, hopefully, once we get this implemented, we can have a smoother transition and continue what, what they're already doing at the elementary school. One thing, another thing that we, Mr. Raskusson and I are doing is we're meeting with each new student that comes into the district. It's been hit and miss over the last few years on students coming in and they come here for various reasons and we want them to have a positive experience. And part of that is getting them started on the right foot. And so we're, we're meeting with students that are new and we are going through our handbook and, and just kind of answering any questions that they may have and then just trying to get them acclimated to some of our, some of the things that we expect here at Painsville School, so. Any questions for me?
Do you do the same thing with the parents of new students?
It's harder to meet with the parents. A lot of them don't, they're not at open house. When they come in, depending, it depends on the situation and, and, you know, what, what the, where that student is as far as classes and services and things like that.
I'm sure if there are any questions, they can contact you.
Absolutely. Yep. I always try to introduce myself when they come in to register their end gift tours and things like that. Thank you.
Great. All right, Rick, you're up next. Let's hear what's happening with our activities, please.
Right, well, we're excited, obviously, that school is back. It's been fun to see our, our young people and our coaches back, enjoying the spirit of competition again. We had the activities meeting last month that we had prior to season getting kicked off, and it was great to get information out to parents, those kids and those families. And then we also got a ton of forms and fees taken care of that night, like Cassandra couldn't believe the stack of papers that we had. So she was, she was stoked to get all that stuff in right away. So we're going to try to make that a yearly tradition going forward and add a few things to it to make it better. We've had some power issues at the football stadium, unfortunately, so we're looking, we're constantly, we're going to resolve that issue. But in the meantime, I think we're planning on having power to the scoreboard at the tower for Friday. We moved Friday's game up from 7 o'clock to 4 o'clock to help ensure that we get that game in. We have daylight. And we will plan on trying to get either our regular concession stand operating or we can also use the baseball concession stands too. So just either right up the hill or right there by, by the ball pit. So we'll have a concession stand that'll be operating. So keep on working on that. And then I guess I'd like to conclude by thanking our teaching and coaching staffs. They've been great to work with so far to start the year. Anything I've needed from them, they've been quick to respond. Or if I've had a phone call about something, they've been great to work with. So I just really appreciate everything they've done helping this transition possible, so. Matt, do you guys have any questions for me?
What's wrong with the power? So we're zeroing in on it or are we still wondering what it is?
When I do a buildings and grounds update, I'll update.
I have a question about cross country. How's that going? Basically BB is sending boys over. I didn't think, are there any girls that are coming over?
I think there was one girl last time. Season started, I hadn't checked recently.
So that's one.
Yeah, there are five or six boys that are coming over. It's been great so far. When we go in that direction to meet, like when we went to Morris to start up the season, we swung right through there and picked up their athletes. But otherwise, like yesterday when we went to Long Prairie, they came over here, jumped on the bus and then we went up to Long Prairie.
I heard the kids are messing together.
Seems like it. I mean, I talked even to a couple of them here from BB last week when we had a volleyball match. Just asking how it was going. They said they're enjoying it. Well, it seems like it's been a good experience. Our kids seem to be enjoying it, our coaches are, so it's like good kids.
Great. Thank you much. All right, yep, we're still here. Community, come on up, man. What's happening in the community?
All right, good evening. We'll start with a pack report. So fall use continues to increase and many new members. Summer was actually really stronger than most in the past. So it was our first summer in the pack, but as far as usage and new member sales, the most we've ever had since. Community had brochures out, many new activities for both youth and adults. We're excited to get into the full CT shop now, the wood shop later in the fall. Pause, we're already at 97 for the school year. Like David said, we just really appreciated being able to be over here. It, it make for some challenges, of course, you know, moving over and then we had to move into some new rooms midstream and, but it was just great how everybody kind of worked together. And they're very glad to be back in, back in our own space at the, and the air quality and temperature, it's amazing at the elementary school right now. I was over there the first day when it was so muggy and hot. Boy, it's really nice, especially for those extended days too, that the kids can be in. That, that conditioned space at the end of the day is just remarkably different, so. Our livestream, we had our first livestream with the BB match. That was an amazing match, if you watched it.
Yeah.
Seeing the girls just battled and it was a heartbreaker, but boy, we had over 1,000 views before the broadcast was done. I think we had a couple hundred on during the game live at each, at many marks. So it was a, that's a big broadcast for us, so. That was exciting and fun. Other than that, just rolling along. Any questions for me?
Is Gutwold still going strong?
Oh yeah, yeah, every day. Yeah, so.
And when I come in the mornings, there are a lot of seniors coming in.
Oh yeah.
And I have comments from community members from other communities.
Yeah, we have people coming from all, or a lot of Painsville people, but a lot from other communities, so, yeah. There's a real dedicated group that plays in the mornings and at nights and on the weekends and so, yeah.
So I, at the risk of being a little broken record, we are about a year now at the pack center. So what do you think? Just in general, are we way better off than we expected we were going to be at? I kind of get that sense from you.
As far as like usage and.
Same, everything else and how the whole system is working.
Yeah, I mean, I think we, you know, it was tough at first just getting processes down and procedures because there's a lot of unknowns. I think we're running really smoothly.
Excellent.
I think, I mean, we still continue to give many tours to other communities. There's a lot of communities that want to build what we have. It's just part of a big conference. It's called MinRec in St. Cloud, Minnesota Recreation Aquatics and Community Center Conference. And it was a conference all about that. It was on two sessions because of, we kind of have a unique, especially for rural Minnesota, we have quite a unique setup here, so. But yeah, to answer your question, the use and the comments I get from our community members, you know, just how much they love being able to come and walk and they love that we invested in the good floor. You know, the floor was a big thing we talked about. And I get that comment quite often about how it's, their joints don't hurt, even walking inside on the track compared to, you know, walking outside on the trail and that. The usability in the play, like this weekend, the junior high volleyball tournament, they'll be able to get that done so much faster because there's four courts there. It's just the usability is pretty amazing, so, yeah.
Good, good to hear.
It's a good investment for our community and I think people are appreciating it and it's getting used. It's a lot, so.
I'm hearing a lot from my generation.
Yeah, it's good to hear. It's very multi-generational.
Yes, yes. All right, thanks, Matt. Great, Jonah, come on up.
Technology Director.
Hello, everybody. We're back at it already. Chromebook distribution, open house, really well. Every year we have the existing creators come and get their new books. Kind of works a little differently this year. I had two lines. You enter one door, you get everything done, all your paperwork done. Insurance paid if you had locked it in. Then you can just come in and you can leave. Other, you walk in, if you have to pay or fill out your form, Colin local is there to help out and get those families squared away, plus I give them their Chromebook and they're out of the door. So I think I'm going to do that again next year. It's just nice to get them in and get them out. It makes it a lot nicer for families when they can get things done quickly here. We had about 80% of the pro books went out that night and then the rest I was able to get last week and we screwed it back up, so all that went really well. Taking on that, this year so far, I think has been my best back at school time I've ever had. Put a lot of time into making things, making sure things were done on, in August, just to make sure things flowed really nice and staff came back. So that really, really helped. It's nice to be able to have a little more time to stay on top of things. Colin, our technology integrations too, has also helped, you know, a lot of stuff, so. Nice to have a good team to keep things running along. As Janelle alluded to, last month for me, I sent out the materials required by the student data privacy law that went out to families yesterday. We have an inventory going. It's living lists, so as we get more tools and as I go through the tools that we still have out there, it just basically lists required by law now to list what these tools require, what they gather on our students when they create their home, and so on and so forth. So it's a pretty big undertaking to figure out everything we use, but once we get to that point, it'll be nice, because we know really what's out there and what's being shared. The way it was distributed is parents have to use a password to get into the website to do it. This is done just for network security because if you publish this list out to the public without a password or anything, a protection in place, it gives, it allows people a good attack vector to try to get into our network and stuff. So it's important to keep that here and only distributed. Last week, we finished installing our new security cameras that were part of the LTFM budget this summer. We're now up to 41 cameras at the elementary school. We have 126 here. So we've gone leaps and bounds since just a few years ago when we had 48 district wide. So it's really, really nice to have those in place. We have coverage outside now and coverage inside. I think David and Cassie and Jesse have really come to appreciate all the coverage we have, so. Not any questions for me?
Thank you. All right, so buildings and grounds. I'm going to put on my buildings and grounds hat right now. So we've had, unfortunately, some things that we've had to work through in the last couple of weeks. Primarily, as Rick talked about, was power to our football field. What I am learning is that our electrical system that comes from Excel into our district, there's a couple of ways in which that can be set up and to function. And the way in which we had it set up and to function has had some, we've had some fuses blown and we've had some underground cabling that's gone bad. And so we've got some work ahead of us, but we have some decisions that we need to make about how we continue to move forward. So I, what I've done is I've been working with the consultant who I've been talking with to have some background and I'm getting some recommendations from, we are working with Wilmer Electric. We've contacted both Highline and High, Highline Construction and some local providers, and it just was outside of their scope. So I really looked to, to get some wide, robust recommendations. In the meantime, we do have power so that we can continue to hold our football game. And you know, we had to move our first one, which we were grateful that Melrose took that on for us so we were able to get the game in. But it is, so that our fix right now is temporary and we're hoping that we'll have a little bit more permanent solution so that we can get back to those Friday night lights, right? Because that's a big deal for our students and it's a big deal for our community. But there's some work to be done to figure out the best route and the most economic and long-term solution for that, for that fuse transformer and all of the stuff where the power comes into the district from the Excel lines. Okay, so that's really the heart of what's happening there. I've got great resources. Our buildings and grounds, our two leads have done a nice job alerting us and as soon as we knew what the issues were, unfortunately, it was right around Labor Day. And so that threw a wrench in our timing to get people in to really dig into what the heart of the issue was. So I will be updating the board more when I know what our options are and then I can make a recommendation for a long-term solution. But in the short term, we are going to have, you know, we're going to be planned early on Friday and I'm grateful that not only, I mean, that's, it's a change for our SOC center. It's a change for our officials. It's a change for all of our, the people that are helping. So people were really flexible in order to meet the needs for our kids, so I'm, I'm happy for that. Otherwise, you know, buildings and grounds, the other piece, just to kind of update you on, as we've talked a little bit about change in processes for our custodial staff, really working on efficiencies, looking at how we are deploying our staff throughout the, throughout the day. And, I mean, we've got bumps in the road, but we're, we're continuing to make progress. And I think that it's, it's going well. It's just we've got to continue to review and revise and make, make any changes in response to what the staff are feeling and hearing, but also really taking a look at big picture. What do we do to stay the most efficient and be the most fiscally responsible in those roles and responsibilities? So that's a little, kind of the, the two big updates is the personnel. We've talked a lot about those processes with our staff, but then also the electrical issue at the football field. Any questions on buildings and grounds? Otherwise, I'm going to move on to something kind of exciting. So I'm going to click on this tab. So something that I think is really cool, and, and we've talked quite a bit about our FFA program and our, this is a really exciting opportunity for us because our FFA chapter was highlighted through a magazine, digital. There's, there's just a great story. So I want to take a minute, if you don't mind, to share the summary of our Painsville FFA chapter.
Our plot is about 10 acres, just over. For 10 acres, south of the school here, we currently grow corn and soybeans. We've always grown those too. Starting last year and this year, we are also growing sweet corn. Currently have two types. We have colored and white sweet corn.
I've seen this, this heavy presence of the alumni's involvement. Of course, we have this great plot that is sort of a foundation of our fundraising for our chapter, but also is just a real presence that FFA has in our community. The alumni does a great job just supporting us year-round. In all of our endeavors, we have a lot of presence from them at our meetings, coaching us in all things ranging, ranging from parliamentary procedure to livestock. The alumni has just been a big help in everything that we do and we really appreciate their involvement.
The role of the alumni chapter in the field plot, you first need to understand how things are structured. The alumni chapter. The alumni chapter has a designated plot committee, and the students have their own plot committee. The two committees work together on certain activities, but also have specific activities that they're responsible for. For the students and their individual activities, things that would include would be like the weed control aspects and pulling weeds necessary. As for the alumni, one main big responsibility is all the preparation for tanning the seeds that are necessary for the plot. For the combined activities, such as the planting of the field, the harvesting for sure, the maintenance of the signs that we put up for the seed companies, and then just the overall maintenance of the plot.
My involvement is I am doing an SAE where me and one other student are doing a sweet corn business. We also are involved on the committee for the plot.
We're planning to sell the sweet corn in Paintsville. I'm working on building a website for it and maybe just trying to sell it at my mom's game shop and selling it to the beautiful community of Paintsville.
So I certainly have grown a lot in my one year of involvement. I went from knowing very little to being the co-chair. And although I may not know everything, I certainly feel that I've grown exponentially because I can reach out to the alumni committee and I can reach out to local farmers and I can actually understand what they're saying. I can be more of service to my community by simply just being an FFA.
My favorite part of being involved with the FFA chapter is to see the leadership and educational development of the students. One part of that is being able to serve as a mentor. This has just been a wonderful experience in seeing how these kids respond to the whole process and being involved in having this project. We look forward to the end result.
The neat thing about having such a supportive community alumni and supporters organization too is when I am able to see people who were students back in the nineteen seventies or eighties come back and be able to help and assist these students now. It definitely shows that longevity of the program. That's really empowering.
There's a couple of things that I just want to highlight that I think is, oh, oh, hang on. Okay, we're gonna X this tab so it doesn't just start playing. All right. So there's a couple of things that I think are really cool about this. This is one of the ways that we see our community and our school partnering together. And I think as we've talked about how we as a school continue to thrive and give to our community, it's a way that we can show how we do this together. And I loved that you have the, the demonstration of mentorship and the communication of working together. So I just wanted to share that because I thought it was a great honor for our FFA chapter. And I thought it was a, a really a neat recognition, great, phenomenal recognition for our school and our community. So I just wanted to share that with you all as part of our administrative updates. So there you go. All right. Anything before I move on? All right. So next I'm going to invite up Mr. Pat Wesby and Mr. Mike Benninger. Mike, do I say your last name right?
Vinegar.
Vinegar. I do not say it right. And I've been saying it wrong for a year, so it's gonna give me,
I didn't even notice.
Give me a year to correct it. So, all right. So one, the reason I've invited Pat and Mike here today is to really give up the board an update on kind of where things are at with the pack construction. So last fall, we were having some issues with water, right? And we had some, when it was, we had fall rains. And actually, I'm pretty grateful that we have the fall rains that we did. While Matt Dickhausen is probably not grateful because it was really stressful, it really did expose an issue for us that we needed to dig into and find out what's going on and how is this gonna resolve? So that's where I've got SiteLogic here to kind of give us an update from, from a board perspective for you all to hear what kind of the history is in the solution. Before I just turn it over, I do want to introduce Pat Wesby. So Pat is new to the group here. So Scott Munson has actually returned to the superintendency. And so Pat is serving in his role. But you'll recognize Mike has been here throughout the project. But so I will just turn it over to Pat and let me pull up my, I have your presentation here. So I'm gonna minimize that and I'm gonna sneak in here, look at how well I did that. And we're going to present, maybe.
It's critical slideshow.
Yeah, what, there we go. From the beginning. All right. So I am actually going to, do you have any notes on there? Or can this play this way?
I think.
Is that fine? Okay. All right. So take it away.
All right, team. Well, first of all, thank you for the opportunity to, to be here. And you're gonna learn in a minute that I'm a former educator myself and former superintendent. And so listening to what you have going on gives me goosebumps, quite honestly. And so I want to say thank you on behalf of your district for what you all have done over the last, what, however many years you've been on the board. And I know it's been a challenge for all of you, but listening to your team talk about what you've got going on, that's really cool. So congratulations on that. So. So yes, we're, Mike and I are here and we're just gonna go zip through that. I was a teacher, a principal, most recently I was the superintendent in SOC Center, and made the choice to, to come to work with SiteLogic. And fair question is why? And, and I'll, I answer it very honestly in a sense that as an elementary teacher, I have, I felt I had influence over twenty-five kids, right? As an elementary principal, I felt like I could influence and help an entire school, you know, whether it be three hundred, four hundred, five hundred students. As a superintendent, I felt like I could help and have influence over an entire district, like I'm witnessing in your district. And as a SiteLogic person, I feel like I could have influence and help school districts across our state in the area of facilities. And so for me, my why, if you will, is, is just to kind of expand that and help in a, in a, in a greater capacity. So that, that's, that's the why. So tonight, I just want to talk a little bit, or Mike and I want to talk a little bit about the, the challenges that you've all experienced with the, the water coming in and the roof from the pack to the school when we, when we, when we did that. So, so, so really what I wanna, what we want to do is to briefly outline the challenge, outline the solution, outline the timing of the solution, and outline the cost. Okay? And then answer any questions that you have. Okay? Is that fair? Okay, so the challenge. The first one was that the concept, and Mike might be able to talk to this much, much better than I, but the concept was challenging from the start. Anytime you have a new building, budding up to an, an existing building, trying to get that roof line to, to match up, whatever, that was from the start. During the design phase, and, and I love what you guys talked about with the use of the, of the pack and how that's impacting the community. That's, that's just really cool. But from the design phase, I think our team believed that we had a, a, a design that would work. Okay? We found that it didn't. You found that it didn't, unfortunately, right? And, 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 you know, I'm here to, I think all of us at SiteLogic would probably say we, we apologize for that, right? But during the post-construction phase, that's when we realized that we had a gap in our design. Right? Which resulted in, which you are probably very well aware of, ice dams up there, water coming into your building, and, and what challenges those present. Okay? So here's this first picture here. A laser, but you can see the, the.
Over here? You can just, you just drive it. I'll just click, I'll just click.
All right. So right here where the arrows are, those, those, right there and on the other side, those were the areas of, that were, that were challenging, right? This is a probably a little bit better photo for you. This area here, and obviously on the same on the other side, was where the, where the concerns were. Okay? Ice, as I understood it, would, would dam up here, would melt. And that's, and really no runoff. Mike, am I?
Yeah. Well, you can imagine even when it rains, how much rain's coming off that roof. And it's hit Parapet, as I'll call it. You know, it's like a raging river out there, I'm sure. And then in March, when it started melting, the, the ice backed up and then it starts going over the seams on the metal, on the metal roof. So that was, this, this was a challenging area to come up with a way to, to keep that from happening.
Okay? So the solution, and again, the solution, and I'm gonna talk about the solution process. Just again, so you're aware there were many types of solutions that were kicked around internally with SiteLogic. And I remember Jason Akin, who was our vice president, saying, "We do not want a Band-Aid solution," right? And there, there were some Band-Aid solutions that were kicked around. And so what we did is we partnered with an independent roofing contractor and expert. It's one that we worked with before on other challenging projects. It's that neutral third party, right? That's a complete different set of eyes on the project and we partnered with them. And what we are here tonight and moving forward is very confident in this solution, both functionally and aesthetically. Okay? And so. And permanent. Yep. Yes. So now here's, this is just a drawing and Mike, I may have you talk a little bit about, but that picture that I just showed you where, where the issues were, it's right here and right there, correct?
Yep. So that, that's the roof of the whole fieldhouse. And then where the big stripes are and the hatch, hatched area or shaded area is, is just above that Parapet wall, from the peak of the fieldhouse down to that Parapet.
Okay, so that's, that's the area that, that, that we're gonna be talking about. And I'm gonna slide to the next picture, maybe. Right? Okay, so this is, it's the exact same picture. But basically what's gonna be happening is that there's going to be a, a rubber roof membrane from this whole area back up to the top. Okay, I'm gonna.
I can go backwards, Juan.
Okay. So all right, so this area here will be a rubber membrane. And now I'm gonna go one more and here. I think what, and again, I'm gonna lean on Mike here a little bit, but this membrane is going to go up over that. So it's not, there're not gonna be any seams here and on both sides. So not able to show, but if you look at my hand, it's, it's gonna kind of wrap up on top of this area here. Right, Mike?
Yep. And, and part of the challenge of that, it's not as simple as it seems because you got, you got the flat roof building that moves this way and that way. And you got the metal building that moves this way and that way. And we have to accommodate for the expansion joints in there. And, you know, and that's a big part of the challenge. And we, we feel with this membrane roof and the expansion joints, that this is a seamless, hopefully a seamless as possible solution.
And, and to your point, sir, our goal is to have it permanent as well, right? We don't want to keep coming back and you having to keep messing around with this.
I wish I were gonna tell you, but when we were planning this, there were questions that came up on exactly that area. And lots of us didn't really say anything. And I had a visit with Janelle just trying to find out exactly where it was, because we're Minnesota, right? It's not logical. How long's the membrane gonna last?
It's a twenty-year warranty on the membrane.
So we have a roof up there that's probably a hundred-year roof. And now we've put a twenty-year membrane on it, which now is gonna last us twenty years instead of a hundred.
Hundred-year roof where?
Most steel roofs are close to hundred-year roofs. I know there's seven. Okay, part of the idea of the steel building was maintenance. So we didn't have to rebuild it. We're spending the kids' money instead of teaching them replacing all these flat roofs all over the place. And so the membrane, you just keep going. I'm getting too far ahead.
No, I think that's a great question. I appreciate the, the conversation. And so again, what, what, and it's not only SiteLogic, but it's also working with that third party, giving us and working with us on, on, on those, on that solution. Right? And you, I think you are aware that the timing and the cost, our goal is to have this scheduled and completed this fall, right? I think, I know that Mike is working on that. The solution is, is roughly about a, about an eighty thousand dollar expense, with none of which is yours, right? I mean, you, I think you've been made aware of that. And Mike talked about the, the warranty. There's no impact on the warranty to, you know, the existing roof or the, the adjacent roof. Okay?
So Bruce, to answer, I think that's a, your question is valid of what does that mean then at the end of, when that? So if the warranty is twenty years, what does that mean at the end of twenty years? And how does that become part of ours?
Spend to do it over.
Right. And so I think that, that might be a question that, that we can come back to.
We were trying to avoid all those costs on the size of that roof to make sure we were spending money on kids' education, not doing something they weren't supposed to have to touch again.
Twenty years now won't be eighty thousand dollars either. Maybe it'd be kind of the same effect to us as eighty thousand dollars today, but.
Correct. That might be a big disaster.
So, you know, the other point to keep in mind though is it also is, is the steel roof is also a twenty-year warranty. Right? And so, you know, if there were, if, if our issues on any, anything after the twenty years, right? I mean, the warranty for both is, is the same. Right?
And it should last longer than the warranty.
Yes.
That's part of it, the life product is.
Yep.
Pitch roof on our elementary school, the, what used to be the middle school gym, the elementary school gym. And that roof's been there a long time. So I believe the paint is warranted for that twenty years. But that's, we see the steel on, of bullshit all over this country. And we're full of farmers around here. They know how to build efficiently. And that lasts. The membrane would concern me some. But keep going.
That, this is, this is what I have or what we have, but I mean, I think.
Is, is there a reason why we're going with membrane instead of putting in a steel fix?
Mike, I would.
Because we were sure this would work, be my best answer to that. They tried it with steel. See that is a steel piece together in the picture. You end up with seams. So what, what I saw happening in the wintertime, that, that ice dams up, right? So that the ice would get, you know, so thick, it would be up above the seams. Standing seam roof. So those, those, those roof panels, they, they come together like this. And like the water would get so deep, it would start going up above the seams on the standing seam metal roof. And we're just getting rid of that in that area. So that's not gonna be possible for the water to get, you know, to build up and get deep.
Are we timed for questions or should we wait for you to finish and ask more?
Well, this is, he's, go ahead. Question time.
Okay, so from the peak of the building to the top of that flat wall, what is that pitch? And could it be a steel roof over the top of this steel roof without the maintenance issues going over the top of that wall? When, when this came up, when it first started, the conversation was whether we should raise the whole height of the building so we didn't have this issue. And I'm sure many of us were in there. So we raised the height of the building and we don't have this. No, we are sure. We are just fine here. But the membrane would concern me some. Now that it could be that's not enough pitch. So then you may have more trouble with the steel than not.
And then you're basically, you're essentially then also building a dormer. You're gonna have dormer sidewalls to that separate pitched roof, which you're gonna have potential leak issues along those sidewalls. And, and weight.
I did get a picture of the roof at, there's Sam's Club. What's the other one? That's the membership thing over at Sam's Club, a brand new building. That's a flat sheet metal roof on that thing. And I had one of our stakeholders, one of our community members, took pictures of that while we were talking about different issues. And it's a flat steel. And they, it's all over that. And they, it's all over that building and they expect that to last a fair amount of time. Know no more about it, other than I saw the pictures, I know they exist. Uh, one of our, um, committee members probably could tell us more about it. He talked to the construction people while it was being built. But it's the long term. All these little things we don't want a short term fixing, that we are taking one dollar if we can avoid it out of money that the taxpayers everywhere are paying, not going to education. We needn't going to education, not to roofs.
But the difference between that groups is that's a kind of new construction, you're not adjoining two separate buildings together. So that's a little different, you know? So it's not quite entirely the same.
Well, little bit here irritating to me, we brought the question up. There were a bunch of us that thought this wasn't gonna work and it didn't. I mean, we're just John Doe people. Yeah, I've done some building, but that's not my career. It was a logical thing. Ice and snow have been here for centuries. It's not like that's a new phenomenon either. Um, just very frustrating to me, but
And Bruce, I do remember we were asking about it, but we also have to remember we had a budget. And so wasn't it additional cost on putting it higher, bigger pitch? I know we went through those conversations, so that's also choices we did make too by saying with the
We didn't, but they said it would not work.
Yes.
Okay, they didn't say we were gonna have this. I'm fine if it would've worked. But we were all approaching it saying, okay, that ice and snow isn't gonna go away. That's not a new phenomenon for Minnesota. The expectation that this is happening surprises me because everybody that led us through that first part of this from SiteLogic, it was some, a different name at that time. They led us really straightforward all the way through this thing. I just assumed we were fine. Very frustrating.
Oh, question. And, and, and I, I hear you're frustrated, actually, I, I think we're frustrated as well, right? I mean, and, and so yeah.
So this membrane kind of work like a gutter? Does the
And to say back, how does that adhere to the, the, the peak of the roof? And then along those side, you know, sides of that lower membrane that's just flapping in the wind? So is that, that just adhered down to that roof? And what prevents the water then at some point in time from leaking at that membrane? As you, you know, again, talk about the streams of water coming down roof line and or ice water dam buildup along those seams. Anything, anything you see against that steel is gonna have a potential for buildup.
Seems so they, they lay insulation between the standing seams on the metal. And then they adhere, they adhere the metal to the insulation. So you got a nice flat surface there. And then they have a termination bar that's designed for this purpose that goes along the edges. And then, and there's also another termination, I, I can't remember the detail for the termination, but under that peak, there'll also be a termination bar there. So the roofing system will be adhered and fastened to the
The existing.
The existing one.
So then the water will run down on the edges of the existing, the building that was there before? It will run up to the
It will go down, will extend that, you see that, uh, the slope?
If you wanna drive, here you have the
This, um, uh, the slope here, it'll be, we're gonna extend that out several feet beyond where it is right now. So it's more of a gradual slope to the edges, but the water will continue to come down here and spill into the gutter system. Some will spill into the gutter, mostly it will spill into the gutter system. Some will go down onto the, onto the lower.
So we'll still probably affect, it's just that it's not going to, the thought is it's not gonna cause issues?
Right, there, there won't be a seam there from that ice dam. And, and, and one thing about having the dark roof is you'll have the sun, which will aid in melting there. There are some heat tapes up there too, which will be maintained and working to the, the ice buildup.
Can I step up there?
Will those heat tapes be easily accessible? I know they don't last forever. Or do you have to rip the roof off?
No, 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 they're, we're within the gutter system.
Okay.
So you're talking about the membrane coming down continuous and right up over this edge?
Yeah.
It's logical. So it's gonna be white or black?
White. Part of it is we are here, this happened, that we have to have a solution. I mean, yes, I think we're all frustrated. We didn't want anything to go wrong with the project. But we also knew there were gonna be things that are gonna go wrong with a new build. Oh, when you're taking, oh, it's gonna be a new building, right?
We weren't engineers, engineers told us this isn't gonna work. Honestly, I'm not finding any grace for that because
I, I wanna reiterate, this isn't the new building adjacent to the old building. This is still the top roof of the field of the wrestling area, right? So I mean, this isn't, this isn't our old, old building. This is our two new buildings where they join together.
So I've heard a couple of questions that I think we can, um, get some clarity on. So the, you asked, somebody asked if it's black, black or white and it is black and, and I, so that helps with melting.
It'll help with the melt.
Rest of it's white, so when it's helping with the melting, that could be a parts of this, but this isn't gonna stop, stop the ice. I mean, um, your wind, you're, you're on the south side, it's gonna come over that peak. So the ice is gonna be there, right? But the white al- also makes a difference for us the rest of the year. When we're trying to keep the building cool, aren't we not a bit worried about that heat from a black roof penetrating into that building and changing our dynamics of our air system?
I did not ask our roofing consultant that question, but I know I, I've been on white roofs. I know white roofs, they're, they're, that material is way stiffer than the EPDM rubber like we're using here. And I would, one reason I would guess he didn't suggest that is because of the flexibility of the material. But I can't say that for sure, I can ask him then, I'll get back to you.
You maybe walk us through the warranty, so maybe that would help us ease us. So twenty year warranty, does, does it like ten years down the road? It's inspected and checked or do you know what I mean to give us peace of mind? Like, yes, this is working, come twenty years, we're not gonna have to meet this whole thing. Like, what is the process ongoing, like?
The work and labor as well as the, I mean, installation as well as the material.
And I believe we have membrane, membrane on some of those roofs, right?
We do have membrane, that's membrane roof that we're looking at. So the warranty is, is on the membrane that it's not gonna degrade or start wearing away. And it's also on a, what, the reason we wanted to go with this third party consults because they're gonna expect it, inspect it and make sure that the parts that they use, so those termination bars and then fasteners are manufacturer approved devices. So they can support that warranty for twenty years. Sometimes roofers will come in and they'll give you the, the Firestone membrane and a Carlisle termination bar, well, then your warranty's shot. So that's just one thing we gotta expect to make sure is happening. So that it is installed to support the warranty.
That would be, we would check, like our girls would check, you know, probably kind of where they check roofs and
Yes, I would say just regardless of whether it's a membrane roof or a whatever type roof, you are inspecting, you know, and putting, uh, we work a lot of districts that are, that put that on their LTFM plan, right? We're going to need to replace this in eight years, ten years, twelve years, fifteen years, whatever.
And I think that might be one of the pieces that I would like to hear is, so this solution, that's seventy seven thousand dollars. What is, how much of that is because it's a retro? You know, we're, we're doing, uh, instead of, or we're providing a solution to an issue. If we were to just redo the membrane, is it the same cost? Do you know what I'm saying? So if we're looking at the end of, let's say in twenty, if we get beyond twenty years, twenty five, let's even look at thirty. So in thirty years, what portion of that needs to be replaced? Is it the whole thing? Is it just sealing the membrane? You know, I, those are some questions that I just don't have the answers to, that I think would be really helpful.
The insulation between the, like I talked about, the insulation between the seams.
Yeah.
If it hasn't gotten wet, that will be, you'd be able to save that and reuse it. And that's often done on replacement insulation is reused. What percentage that is of the cost? I don't know, twenty five percent? Yes.
So the other membrane roof, is that gonna have the same longevity as this piece? So if we were gonna, because if we had to re-roof the secondary part, the flat part?
Yes.
Yep, if we had to re-roof that part, would that be in the same timeframe as this piece for example?
Probably, I would think it'd be close. And they're both, they're both Firestone, that, that roof's a Firestone roof and the new roof's Firestone, so.
We go the age of this one.
It's the same.
Will the pitch help the lifetime of a membrane roof?
Yes.
So we could get, so our membrane roofs around here seem to have lasted twenty seven, twenty eight years. You know, we got a few leaks here and there, they get patched up. But that's my impression with all the roofs that we did for a number of years. Um, but being that this is at a pitch, these are different. But this is virtually at a pitch. The side that rolls up, this side is never gonna see the sun. Because the sun is coming from the other side, which means it's gonna be in the dark, which means we're not gonna have sun degrading on that. It may give us some fairly decent time. Maybe though, if you think that's the only solution, we don't really have a lot of choice, just don't have like
Oh, I don't think anybody likes that we're even having the discussion. I mean, to be honest, but you know, I, um, I, I guess, yeah, one of the things that, um, I will say is Matt talked a little bit about Band-Aid solutions and having people kind of throw out some ideas and like, well, we could throw this in there, we could throw that. And that's never, that's never been a, a concept that was entertained long term. Because this, I guess, when I walked in and I heard that we've got some issues, my conversation with SiteLogic was, I heard there were concerns, this has gotta be made right. And, and a, a solution, not a Band-Aid. So I, I agree, I don't love that we're here and having the conversation. Um, but at the same time, I think if you guys can follow up with some of those questions, I can put that out to you all and we can talk through what some of those other, those other pieces are. We know what to look for, what to expect. But I, I, I would appreciate not having to deal with, I mean, I guess Matt would appreciate not having to deal with this in the fall. Knowing, and, and I mean, I just, I, we want, we want a, we want a solution.
It's actually pretty embarrassing because there are probably people that believe this is the school board's fault because maybe did it. It just is frustrating as all, you know, but
And, and it's, yes. And, and I think that's why we're here is it was a design, right? And, you know, we're here to make it right. That's, that's, that's
Was a twenty year warranty and it still is a twenty year warranty. So we didn't lose any years on a warranty. It's just a variable of, is this gonna work? But if it doesn't, you'll come back, take care of it, right? It'll be under warranty, so, so I don't know what else to
It's like all the way to the peak. I don't think you can miss. If you were gonna do anything halfway on that roof, man, I, I wouldn't buy into that at all. You're going to the peak. Really, what can happen? As long as we can prevent the, the westerly winds and driving rainstorms, that kind of stuff. I can't imagine it won't work, just very frustrating.
Yep. Okay, we will, thank you. I mean, I appreciate the, the conversation and, uh, we will, we will, I will begin with
Okay, and then I'll get that back out to you all so you can kind of see what, what our solution is.
Okay, all right, thanks, Dean.
All right, thank you. All right.
Music trip update.
Hey, thank you for meeting so recently. Thanks. So I met most of you, I've been here long enough to, thirty seven years, so, but I think a lot of you haven't met Nick. I'm Nick Flatam, the band director, I'm looking forward to going on our first trip together. Um, this is going to be the eleventh long, long trip that I've taken with the choir. We started in two thousand and went to Disney World and then we were alternating with New York. So this will be the eleventh year, I started going with the band with Claire and Nolton in two thousand fourteen. Um, and after COVID and we had to cancel our trip two years ago to go to Disney World, that's Nick, this might be a good time to shake things up a little bit. Um, those trips to New York and to Disney have gotten really expensive with all the travel expenses going up. So this year we decided to give something new a try and go to Branson. So we're going to go to Branson, uh, Wednesday, November twenty fourth, which is the night before Thanksgiving, and come back on that Sunday, the twenty seventh. Um, so we're not missing any space. Uh, we're leaving at eight o'clock that night and the trip costs seven hundred and ninety five dollars for the students, which when I compare prices, I don't factor some of the trips I've been on to New York, that was about the cost then. So I'm sure New York would have been quite a bit more. Um, so we're looking forward to it. We have forty, forty one students going and Nick and I, and then five chaperones. So we have forty eight, we packed the bus completely. That's as full as we could get without having to get into another bus. So the numbers worked out great because once you get into the second bus, the cost really increases for the kids. So, so Nick was gonna talk you a little bit through this itinerary.
Yeah, so we'll be spending, um, well, with these trips, the kids are just, they're, it's go, go, go. And they, they get up and then we go. So the first, the first day when we leave, we'll leave at eight PM on the twenty third. Um, and we'll, we'll, um, get to our spot. Well, we actually won't get into our hotel right away. We'll go to Talking Rocks Tavern, cap, sorry, Talking Rocks Cavern first, where we will, um, go through, uh, go through and, and learn a lot about, um, we'll go through a cave. Yeah, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a cool, cool experience with them. Um, and then we will, um, check into our hotel after that. Um, and then that day is gonna be our performance day for the choir. The choir and the band will be performing. We'll be eating at an Italian restaurant. And then right after that, we'll be going to a show, uh, where the choir will get a clinic and they will be able to, uh, perform right, right before the show. And then we will enjoy the, the Hey Goods performance, which Branson, I've been to Branson yet, so I'm very excited about this trip too. Um, it's all about shows, there's just shows on belief there. And there are just different kinds of shows. Uh, my wife went the other couple of years, or almost a year ago and said it was a lot of fun.
Hundred and twenty shows per day.
That's how many? There we go.
Been to Clendale, it's a lot of, it's been like five times.
It's a lot of, the kids are gonna go nuts.
Yeah, it's cool. Um, and then, so then after, after that day, choir will have their performance and then we'll, we'll show, we'll um, do the Hey Goods show. After that, on the day three, this is when the band will perform. Um, this is the day we will go to the fun parks and where they'll enjoy a two hour fun pass and do miniature golf, bumper boats and a bunch of other fun stuff at a theme park. Um, and I learned that Branson is the miniature golf capital of the world, something like that. So a student told me that, so he was very excited about playing miniature golf there. So, um, we'll be looking forward to that.
I'm looking forward to the go-trap, the go-kart trap that reaches over four stories.
Oh, yeah. That'll be fun too. Um, and then we will go to the Branson Landing for some shopping. And then after that, we'll go eat at the, at a steakhouse and catfish house restaurant. Then we'll go, we'll be going to another show called Mickey Gilley Grand Shanghai Theater. And this is where the band will be performing right before this. Um, and we also will get a clinic. Um, and that's kind of nice, that's really nice to have somebody else that's not me in front of the kids. Uh, that's, it's a powerful moment for all the kids. Um, same thing with choir, of course. Then we'll enjoy the show after that performance in clinic. The last day, we will be spending there total, uh, we're gonna be, we'll be going to a showboat and doing a lunch cruise. Um, and then we will be departing to Dollar City, um, and enjoying, enjoying time at Dollar City. And which is a theme park.
Yes, it's all western.
It's all western. It's all western.
Yeah.
Um.
You should just travel to Branson and watch our show.
Then we'll be heading home on Sunday and we'll be back about ten, so it'll be a twelve, eleven to twelve hour trip for the kids. And do a lot of bonding in the bus, sometimes the bus is the best part of the trip.
Well, they've been doing some fundraising, last spring, we uh, did butter braids and we're doing those again now. Um, the students have been selling music stocks and I had, one of my students, I think, raised almost the entire cost of her trip by selling stocks. So that's a good one for people who wanna give money and not to put it towards funds, the fundraising company, but actually put it all towards the students. And then this fall, you're invited on October twenty eighth. On Friday, that's when we're going to have our silent auction and soup sandwich and song, which we haven't had now in four years, so. I had to find all new people to do the silent auction because no one, none of the parents have done it before, but luckily, uh. Grace Lance Diner said she talked them through it, so. Or to that.
Is the silent auction going to be online or in person?
Be in person. Person in the gym and the band and the jazz, the band and this, actually, the sixth graders are involved with this year because of where calendar worked out, so the sixth graders. Uh, the band choir are going to be participating in the concert as well, so the band and sixth grade band will perform in the gym and then we'll move it to the auditorium for the choir and the jazz band. So we'll have the soup sandwich and song supper at. Soup sandwich supper at five, and then the performances will follow, and the silent auction will be in the gym, so that people can be listening and looking at. So. I'm gonna try it an online one, I might be next.
If, if a uh, community member doesn't have a band member that they can contact, is there a place they could get?
Gonna ask too.
Stocks?
Get stocks?
Yeah, we have purchased stocks or the the braids or, or you know, and make sure you get the, just the.
Yes, so.
Information that's gonna actually step out, you know.
Yeah, we, we can do that, right, and then if you bought stocks, I could probably tell you maybe some of the students that need the most help. And that would be a way of doing it, or you could buy stocks and then we just, just divide it, but when you have forty one going, then divide ten dollars.
Over there. So what I'm hearing is just to get in touch with you, okay?
Yeah, yeah.
Perfect, thank you.
Um, ninth or twelfth grade, is that your number?
Ninth and twelfth.
Right, okay, um. So I count the choir's doing two performances and the band doing one performance?
No, choir's performing on Thursday, band's performing on Friday.
Okay, get that stuff.
There's a clinic for both of them, right before their performance.
The other thing I always emphasize, and I see you're going to caves. When you go on these trips, you gotta do something educational, I mean, I know it's all educational, but there's.
Performing, performing is educational, right, performing.
But when you're traveling that far from home, there's so many things that these kids could learn along the way.
Some of them, it's gonna be probably the first time they've ever been out of Minnesota.
And Missouri is a big country, by the way.
I've been there many times, it is.
It's a new language.
Give them a lot of culture too.
Yeah.
Expose them to things that.
Right.
Can have anything that.
Restaurants and all of that.
And I. I was able to, thankfully, Chapparona Florida and a New York trip, and I will say. That there are a lot of students who have not left this area and it was the awareness, like students literally just being in shock of. Any sort of diversity, different foods, I mean, I was surprised and I shouldn't be surprised. But to them, they were so grateful to have that experience because they might not have that experience otherwise, so to me, I'm like, that's a complete education. They can see outside our community and say, there's a bigger world, there are people. That look different than us, talk different than us, they experience, you know, different shows. I mean, we had students that would cry, they were so overwhelmed with the experience and it was, it was super powerful as a parent to. To see the students just go through a whole trip and plus they were exhausted, which probably made them cry too, but. They were genuinely overwhelmed with certain situations that they saw or the theater performances, so I'm grateful.
I still remember the first time I went to Disney and we performed with the Disney Orchestra for the candlelight and we did two performances, so we got a chance to come back in between. And one of the girls came up to me and she was just bawling, she said, I've never experienced anything so wonderful in my life, I still remember which student it was too. And, yeah.
I cried watching that same candlelight experience, it would be like, yeah. Opportunities.
Yes.
It's a very.
Thank you very much, yeah, any uh, any marketing or any communication that we can help with, or you're not gonna help with, to get that out there to, to the community, I think there's, you know. A big force of community that would love to, to help out that like, or somebody said it doesn't have connection to a, a band student or a choir student.
That's great, thanks. What we're talking about trying to publicize, um, I was wondering how, how we can get our fine arts activities on the calendar. Cause I've tried the last couple of years to spread, because our calendar that we came out, we've got all the sports on there, but we don't have, so I just need to make sure that I connect with whoever. So I talked to Rick and so I don't know, maybe I should send an email to Mike Jacobson and say, hey, if you don't have the fine art dates by the time you do the calendar, to con- contact me with that, because. I'm just not sure how to get the word to the right person.
It's, yeah, Chanel is sitting here and she doesn't let anything slip through the cracks.
It'll be on there next year.
Calendar, the calendar's on the website, right, but it's hard to find it sometimes.
And you know, sometimes the fine arts is a different, I don't know, gotta figure out.
Yeah, it's, it's hard to find.
And we can, that's certainly something we can work on, absolutely.
That's good.
Great idea.
Yep.
Thank you. Very much.
Dee, safe learning plan.
Okay. Alright, so, um, while we really were hoping to not have to say the words safe learning plan and have COVID any reference. Uh, we do have to have it and the reason we have to have it is because we are still continuing to access. Uh, fundings that has come from the federal government, which is um, utilized to uh. Finish our indoor air quality project, and so as a result, we are required to maintain a safe, a safe learning plan. So what you will see is the plan that was um, reviewed by the same committee, who has been part of the committee. From the distance learning determinations and forwards, so it was sent out and reviewed from, by that group. Uh, one thing that is different is you will notice that I, I do have a link for a safe learning plan feedback form. Um, it is uh, one of the areas where um, I think we do need to have a place for our community to add feedback if they would like to. So it's, it's very, a very simple form that just has all of these topics that have been on all of our plans and gives an opportunity for feedback. So um, the plan will be revised two times over the course of the school year. Um, and then updated with any revisions as necessary. So you will see that there are, there are very few uh, requirements, what we've really kind of gotten back to is. If you're not feeling well and if you are sick, stay home, if you have a fever, don't come to school. You cannot come to school if you don't have a fever because you've taken Tylenol or ibuprofen. Those are the, just getting back to really kind of the heart of, of good, um. Self-care with healthcare, yep. So that's, that's really the heart of, of the plan. So there, there's not a lot of changes because our plan was really pretty limited prior. Um, but again, you will, uh, that was here for you just to take a look at, and if you have any questions or comments, please pass them my direction. And I will bring them back to the committee for review.
I think it's just good practice to have one. Always, I mean, you should have a safe learning plan, whether it's required or not.
Yeah. And and I think when it, when it comes back to focusing on, on healthy lifestyle versus COVID per se. It, it's a little bit more. This is just. Good health precautions, so certainly, okay?
Enrollment update.
Alright, so I have added the enrollment update, so one of the things that I think is really important for us to remember as we look at enrollment. Um. And you will see in the newspaper, uh, this week, there's gonna be a different number than is right here today. This is super fluid these first couple of weeks of school, we are different by seven kids, okay? Um, I think the piece to remember, uh, let me ask this. Um. The piece to remember and kind of that we pay attention to is really our net gain, we wanna, as we look at the course of the school year. From summer to today, did we lose more kids than we gained or did we gain more kids than we lost, okay? And as you will see, our net, we had a net gain, okay, and we impacted positively. Um, I think it's also important to take a look at, um, you know, so our elementary school, we had fifteen new, um, sorry, there we go. Our elementary school, we had fifteen students go elsewhere, thirteen students go elsewhere from the secondary for a total loss of twenty eight kids. But then when you take a look at our, our coming in, we have eighteen kids at the elementary and seventeen at the secondary, so we have a net gain, so we have thirty five coming in, okay? Um. And where they go, uh, you'll notice that they're moving to another district or enrolled in their district of residence. Uh, we have a lot of fluidity between our neighbors, which does not surprise me at all. Because they're either on the borders, they're either districts of residence and they, for one reason or another, chosen one or the other. Um, but, and then we do have some just plain old families move, and so then those are district changes as well. But that is our, our real general enrollment update, um, I think one of the things to really, uh, we are hoping that our enrollment stays strong. That is always good for us financially as a school district. Um, obviously, when we look at where kids are coming in and and leaving. Generally, we don't have one grade level that moves in and one grade level that leaves, therefore leaving kind of. Uh, pinch points of enrollment where you've got things that are, or you might have three kids in one grade level and zero kids in another grade level, but yet. It's not enough to add a teacher or decrease a teacher or, you know, realign the resources, so we really have to really, just. As, as Cassie mentioned earlier, really be cognizant of where are things going, how do we need to look at our, our resources and is there anything that we need to realign? So that's, that's the pulse that will keep going and as, as a board, I've shared with you, um. The enrollment spreadsheet that has been part of our financial update, so I'll continue to bring that back for you as well, so you can see those. The greens and the reds, um, after this date of where we have gains and losses, okay, per grade level. So we'll keep that, keep that at the discussion as well.
As I ask, I don't remember, I know I've asked this before, what is the date where they take like a snapshot of what our numbers are for October first, October first?
Thank you. You're welcome, yeah. Any other questions about enrollment?
Did we get a, a large number of? Three or four?
So, um, we, there has been, um, there's been two things that have happened, so we've had all the forms out and, and we have gotten forms back. Um, but there's also been a change. Um. From what's called direct certification and what that means is it's just a, it's a fancy way of saying that, that. Um, the state identifies kind of on our behalf that, that these are some, some families that are eligible and the families don't have to fill out forms at all. Um, what, that has been. A change since, um, July one. And and we have seen a really large increase in participation as a result of that, so I think that's going to help our, um. Our frame reduced, therefore our compensatory revenue, I don't know what the outcome is yet, but it certainly is on my radar.
That makes sense. Makes perfect sense, if they already know who you are, what you are, where you're at and, and everything. Why not just get the work done and we don't have to be dealing with some of that, that's a good idea.
So I'm, I'm hoping to, um. Have a better, when we get our, our revised budget, I'm hoping to have a better. Um, handle on what that true impact is for us, but I, it's, it's, it's been positive so far.
Referendum update.
See, so I don't have a lot to ch- to change or to share, but I do wanna just, um, share with you the, um, the, update the, uh. May I share my tab here?
Top one.
Ah, it is up, top one. Okay, um, so I do have this presentation ready to go, um, I'm gonna just kind of quickly, um. Click through it, there's a couple of pieces of, of information, this has a, mine has some new data. And some of this came from feedback from the staff, so that they, it was clarifying questions, information that they thought was important for our community to hear differently. And this specific little pie graph just shows what percentage of our, um. Um, how our district is funded, so you will see that the black graph shows the money that comes from the state of Minnesota. Um, the green is our local revenue sources and the gray is our federal money, so it's just kind of a visual to help people see how our school district is funded. Um, we talked a little bit more, um, these are all the same slides that we've talked about. Um. We talked about adding more information about, um. These were all the same, this was all new information, we did talk about adding, um, a little bit more clarity around. Um, the second question, um, and the index to inflation, so there's additional information into that. Um, into that slide as well. And then, um, I'm just gonna keep clicking forward, because the most important thing is to see that we've continued to add community meeting dates. And I think that that's the piece that I wanted to just be really clear, that, um, I really hope people have an opportunity to come out and listen. And this will be the presentation, um, as we continue to move on, I'm going to add questions that are posed. And so we can kind of have a running, ongoing discussion about what do you like, what would you like to know and, and what is important. Um, for our community to hear, so, um, again, it's, it's. Going to be the same, excuse me, the same presentation at all locations. Um, and then just add information based on the questions that are posed.
Are these days going out, like on teacher letters to, I think they're being shared broadly and?
Correct, yep, they are being shared, um, they are being shared broadly, so they're on, they're on social media, they're gonna be in the, they've been in the newspaper, they're going out in, um. Um, smores, like some of the parent newsletters, some of those types of things, so yes, they'll be published in, in multiple places, yep. Um, the other document or just that I linked in is just the, the fact sheet, uh, this was set out at the refer, or at our open, um. Our open house and the meet and greets, so some of those have been distributed. Um, again, just really trying to get information out so that people can really just ask questions, okay?
And we as board members could get twenty, thirty of those.
Absolutely.
I visit with people all the time.
Yeah.
And it'd just be nice just to hand them, exactly, so we're always doing exactly the same thing.
Yep, absolutely. Um, and then the last document that I linked in there is, it's just some guidance for you as school board members, but also just, um, as school staff. I think it's important because we often wonder, you know, what can we say, and you will notice that in all of my presentation information, there is not an ask. Or a recommendation or, or a suggestion, this is purely informative. And that really is the heart of the issue as a school board member and as a superintendent and really. Um, it's just a reminder of, of school. Teachers, when teachers are working in their, um, in their official role, they also cannot, they cannot be promoting. Um, nor should they be saying vote yes or vote no. Um, but if they are operating outside of their official capacity on a committee, then it's all, it's, so it's just really making a clear differentiation of my operating. As a teacher right now or am I operating as a community member? Um, so board members, that applies to you as well, am I operating as a school board member? Or am I operating as a private citizen because you are also voters within the school district? So this is just a, a good reminder document that I wanted to put out for you to take a look at, um.
It's the best document I've seen relating to that topic, it covered everything in it, I was totally impressed when I got to that one.
And then like a page.
There's.
We're gonna need a booklet for this.
I liked it, I liked it, I liked it a lot.
Kind of like, I read stuff, it would be kind of. Black and then it would gray and you're kind of thinking, what is this? That was perfectly clear, very good document.
I think I actually remember this from previous referendums as well, so.
Yeah. So that, that's just some information for all of you and for all of us. So beyond that, um, I will turn it over to you, uh, Thomas, for any request for information.
Any requests or information?
Yep, I'm gonna chime in for one second.
Okay.
The presentation about the FFA today, I thought was absolutely excellent, and I wanna try and again say. That I'd like to see a presentation at every single board meeting, meeting that somebody sees up there. Yep, we got a lot of stuff to do, but when we're talking about the kids, seriously, that's fun. There's some of this that's not really so much fun, but it's all about the kids and I like those presentations. It'd be nice to have one at every meeting, doesn't have to be long, just something.
Alright.
Something linked in early in the meeting too, so we don't make them wait the whole meeting to watch it.
I get me first as far as I'm concerned, I think the idea is that it's on there and we're talking about all the things we do. It, no matter who you talk to, if they ask you all the. It, no matter who you talk to, if they ask you all the good things that are done in Gainesville, there's none of us that can list it all. The instructors and our staff, they know our stuff that we don't even know about. It's there, we just gotta try and tell people.
Our community members are just flabbergasted. When I start listing up what we've done with PAC and Innovation Centers and they're just, they're speechless. I didn't know that, wow, can we come see it?
Absolutely, yeah.
I, I tell, call you, I got what to do.
So I do have another item. So when we opened up the PAC Center, we opened up the PAC Center at a time that, um, we had a nice explosion, um, um, as far as getting the information out, but we were fighting with the COVID kind of things. So if you have a business or another entity of some sorts, sometimes they'll have a first anniversary or second anniversary or like a reopening or I just call it showing off. I wonder if it's possible to put together something else now that we have our feet on the ground, show people what it is. You know, we're really good at showing off the first time around and nobody knows about it after that. I think it'd be just kind of nice, I don't know.
I like, I like the idea, yeah, posters or pamphlets or things that just kind of highlight some of the big numbers of the things that we've seen within the PAC Center since it's open, um, just to kind of re, you know, re-energize that.
And when we had the Innovation Center open house or whatever it was introduction and the kids were there demonstrating what they'd done and showing out their products.
Yeah.
That was really exciting to see. I think a lot of the community members really enjoyed that. We could do that again.
Yeah.
At some point.
Um, I know one of the ways that, uh, we've had, um, some of our community members get back is, um, last May, uh, it was supposed to have been the fiftieth class reunion for the first graduating class of the school here and they didn't get to have their, hold their reunion because of COVID, so then they had their fifty-second reunion. Um, but I gave them a tour and it was just an opportunity to walk through, um, I talked to the, um, um, to the C T E teachers, the career tech ads. So we had the welding shop, the wood class, the wood room or the wood lab, um, the auto, the auto shop all kind of put together and they, it was just an opportunity to highlight and walk through. And I think that that was again, a lot of them may have been at the open house, but didn't, it was just kind of a happenstance, you know, right through it is. Um, so I think that, I, I think there's value in getting people back in the community and thinking about how we do that. As a result of that, that one, um, we have another one coming up this weekend uh, because another class said, well, can we see what's happening and what's new? So I think that's, those are some cool things that are happening as well.
Um, but speaking of fifty years.
Yes.
Um, title line, fiftieth anniversary, are, can we do something maybe in, at like a athletic event? Oh, I mean, that's a big deal. If we have people in our community that did play like on the first basketball team and it would be, just be cool to honor that, it's a big deal that.
So I'm, I'm looking to Rick and well, let's brainstorm on that cause I think at, at our next admin meeting, let's find a.
People understand what it is and.
Yep, yeah, 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 I think that's, that's a good idea too.
That's Florida. Yeah, was there, and maybe I, if you're glad, was there any interest in filling school board position? Or we can move forward with six people?
Um, I have not received any formal inquiries, um, or individuals have said I would like, I would like to submit an application.
Have we passed the date where we don't agree about that?
No.
So, um, yeah.
I, I mean, I've had a couple of people who have said that I think if they, if we are in a bind, um, but I, I don't know that anybody has really, I've not received. So in the, in the newspaper, um, really the process is if somebody wants to, um, formally apply, they just have to reach out to me and I'll just give them a one-page document essentially kind of letter. It's an application to fill the seat. Um, but I've, it's, I've not had a lot of interest. Yeah. I have not had it. Wait to read through the line.
Put it out there. All right, um.
Okay.
Yeah, anything else then? Are you not allowed during the meeting?